Good afternoon, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of March 4th, March 5th. I'd like to remind everyone present, please silence your cellphones if you have not already done so. And we'll start just like we always do with a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. Please rise. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under our heads, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do roll call.
Jamie Corradi.
Here.
Michael Cox.
Here.
Peter Hansel.
Here.
Ronald Lozai.
Here.
Chris Paul.
Chris Williams, presented by Mr. Richard Cindula.
Here.
Attorney General.
Approve a publication?
An approval that will be had by time on February 14, 2020, and on February 21, 2020.
Okay, I don't think there's any minutes to approve. The Planning Commission is appointed by the County Commission and we meet twice monthly. We serve as a local planning agency and we hold public hearings and transmit to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, rezonings, and conditional use requests. The Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners at the appropriate meeting. If anyone is in opposition to a comprehensive plan amendment, land development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission transmits recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners, it is important that you attend the appropriate meeting, Board of County Commissioners meeting. For those who are not familiar with the procedures, we have three parts to the agenda. The first part is continuances, which I do not believe we have any of today. Those are items, it's customary that we approve those requests for continuances, where the applicant or staff, because of extenuating circumstances, they request that the item be continued to the next meeting. The next item is the consent agenda. These are items where we have received no letters of objection from the public or from the staff, and we are placed on the consent agenda and will be read item by item. If you wish for an item to be pulled from the consent agenda, please raise your hand with that item and it will be pulled for discussion. Absent objections, those items will remain on the consent agenda and be voted on at one time. The last part of the agenda is the regular items, and those items are not placed on the consent or approved continuance, where they're placed on the regular agenda will be discussed one at a time. Applicants have three minutes to make their presentation, and objectors have three minutes to state their concerns. Following the presentation of objections, the applicant will have five minutes to respond. If there has been a request for a longer time, which I don't think we have any of, at least 20 hours before the meeting, such extra time may be granted for this request. I think I already reminded you to silence your cellphones. One thing I know I didn't do was, if you plan to get testimony there or speak on any item on the agenda, please stand and raise your right hand and be sworn.
Please, sir, affirm the testimony you're about to get, is the truth or will you back?
Okay, and before we start the regular meeting, we'll open up the floor to public comment, to stand and speak to any item not on the agenda. I don't see any. All right, Denise.
Mr. Chair, Planning Commission members, Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. Item PC 1 will be removed from consent, will be heard on regular.
Denise, before you move on from the card, for some reason our agenda says continuance.
Yes, we had an issue with the Sire system, and actually two issues. One issue is that we couldn't change continuance requested. We even reached out to our IT folks and they couldn't make it change to approval with conditions. And we also had an issue that when we uploaded the attachment for the conditions of approval, that they didn't come out and strike through underlying form. So we had those two issues with that agenda, that for that reason, we put the strike through underlying information in front of you and we provided a copy for the clerk as well. So I apologize, we really tried to get that resolved and we couldn't. This is going approval with conditions. It's not a continuance request. I'm gonna move on to item PC 2. Item PC 2 is PDD 207471 in the name of Stephen M. Coggins, revocable trust, Viann Academy. It's for a private school in an AR agricultural residential district. This comes here with a recommendation of approval with conditions.
Is there anyone here to, I mean, is the applicant present? Thank you. Is there anybody here in objection to that item? Okay.
Move on to item PC 3. Item PC 3 is PDD 20CU19 for conditional use, William D. McKnight, Inc., grape expectations for the sale of alcoholic beverages to COP and AMW, beer and wine only, manufacturer of wine on premises consumption and package sales in conjunction with the operation of a winemaking shop in a C2 general commercial district, comes here with a recommendation of approval with conditions.
Okay, is the applicant present? Is there anybody here in objection?
I have a question on that one.
Do you want to pull that?
If I can just clarify the question.
Sure.
Generally speaking, it's the manufacturing of wine. Does that mean that you're gonna have large trucks, semis coming in and dropping off grapes? It's just manufacturing with table grapes or grapes that you have in the shop?
Sir, you need to come to the podium and answer the question.
The wine comes in little boxes about like this and like this. It's shipped in from all over the world, Italy, France, wherever you like your wine, you know. We send a package and then we process it and make bottles of wine.
Thank you. I don't have.
We need your name and address for the record.
Kurt Lindeman, 5411 Pilots Place, Newport Ritchie, 34652.
And you have been sworn. You have been sworn?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Did that answer the question?
Can I ask you a question?
Let me clarify that.
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you very much. Do you want to call for comment on the item?
Is there any other comment on that item PC 3?
Okay, move on to item PC 4. You may have someone here to speak on the item, but I just want to call it out and we'll see. Item PC 4 is PDD 207454 in the name of Ichbal Groves, Inc. It's for a change in zoning from AC agricultural district to an RMH, mobile home district. On this item also, the applicant has voluntarily agreed to record a deed restriction limiting the maximum, the number of units on the property to a maximum of 121, comes here with a recommendation of approval.
Okay, is the applicant present? Is there any comment or objection to this item? Okay, so we need to pull that from consent?
Okay. So items PC 2, PC, and PC 3 are the remaining items on your consent?
I'll move for approval, PC 2 and 3.
Second.
No motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Repose? All right, now the regular agenda, PC 1.
PC 1, good afternoon, gentlemen. Tammy Snyder, Planning and Development. I present for you Starkey Ranch MPUD, PDD 207469. Starkey Ranch is on the north side of State Road 54 and on the east side of Starkey Boulevard. And the applicant is proposing to cancel the currently approved transportation development agreement as most of it has been completed and add pertinent language from it into the conditions of approval regarding Lake Blanche and Lake Blanche and Starkey Boulevard improvements and dedicate right-of-way for Rangeland Boulevard East extension rather than constructing it at this time as there is an Army Corps of Engineer wetland crossing issue. Here's the lovely master plan. And Starkey MPUD was approved in 2012, there have been a few modifications since then. As noted, they are proposing to cancel the approved transportation DA because most of those improvements and credits for such improvements have been completed and/or moved to the new conditions of, revised conditions of approval. The existing unified signed plan development agreement is in no way affected by this transportation DA cancellation and does remain in effect, and the master roadway plan will be revised to reflect this change. With that, the PDD recommends approval to the BCC.
Tammy, can you go back to your first slide for one second? Not that one, I'm sorry. The first one was more, that one. So I think we still have an issue with the title in Sire, because what's on our agenda is different than what you have there. What's on our agenda still doesn't say anything about them building Lake Blanche instead of doing the 54 Starkey intersection, which is an important part of this request, but your title doesn't say that. You say it there, but you're not, at least the title I have here.
See, it says substantial modification to allow the cancellation of the previously approved transportation development agreement and incorporate pertinent language from the transportation DA into the conditions of approval. Did you want it to be more specific as to mention the Lake Blanche intersection?
Yeah, see, right up there you say, replace the requirement to approve the intersection of 54 and Starkey with the construction of Lake Blanche Drive. That's missing from your title in Sire.
Okay, so you wanted that to be more specific?
Yes. It's the main thing they're requesting, and it's not in your title, so I think it needs to be.
Okay, I'll revise that for the BCC.
Thank you, Tammy, is the applicant present?
Yes.
Joel Tu, Tu and Associates, Palm Harbor, Florida. I represent WTSR, which is the developer of record for Starkey Ranch MPUD. I have my client representative, Matt Call, here also, height design, and also Steve Henry from Links and Associates. So if there are any detailed questions, I'm happy to have the appropriate person address it. First, on the description question, Ms. Barrero just reminded me that her letter notices and the other sign notices did include reference to the gist of it, which is the Lake Blanche Drive extension and the deletion of the Starkey Boulevard requirement.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting to notice this problem, Joel, I just want the title to reflect what I actually requested, which currently doesn't.
Right, okay. So yeah, at least the underlying notice information had all those details. As Mr. Goldstein has pointed out, we're really doing two global things here, fairly simple concepts. Number one is because most of the development agreement, which originally was really voluminous and somewhat confusing, because most of that has been performed, we agreed with the county that we would terminate the development agreement and then we would simply extract from that and insert into the new MPUD conditions of approval the remaining obligations that still existed. So the remaining obligations are still in place, they're just transferred to the MPUD conditions of approval. Well, that said, to David's point, the main change is that a business agreement, if you will, was discussed with the county, because as Mr. Tenello knows very well, we have an imminent and substantial looming problem with the new school opening and a dire need to have Lake Blanche Drive constructed to help handle that school traffic. That obligation had not been covered previously. We did the school agreement after the original MPUD approval. So this is a substantial change from the original MPUD approval to accommodate that new K-8 school, which is slated to open 2021 in the fall. So the business arrangement was basically as follows. Historically, there were two developer entities who had the potential obligation for additional improvements at Starkey Boulevard intersection with State Road 54. The new Starkey Ranch developer, if you will, from when they purchased that, but also the prior Longleaf developer portion of the project. So the county had two people on the hook for Starkey Boulevard intersection, no one for Lake Blanche Drive. So the proposal is, that mutually is agreeable to county staff, county attorney's office, and the Starkey Ranch developer, is that my client has agreed to go ahead and build Lake Blanche Drive to help address the school issue for the school district in the county. And so we've committed, in this amendment, to get that right-of-way donated and provided by June of this year, just two or three months hence, have the right-of-way in hand, and then to actually have that road constructed by July 31st of next year. Very ambitious undertaking to get it permitted and built. Mr. Tenello is hoping we can actually get that done, and obviously the parents and others using the school are hopeful. We believe we can do it if there's no delay and if we get this done now so that we know we can proceed. As to that Starkey Ranch Boulevard intersection, we understand there are already issues there. Mr. Cox made that very clear this week to me. We do get that, and what we're all hoping is that the obligation that is remaining with the Longleaf developer, that that will get done sooner rather than later, so that those also are made. If all this pans out, despite the interim pain, but if it all pans out, my client can get the Lake Blanche Drive road completed in time for the school opening, and yet the county ultimately will still get the Starkey Boulevard intersection done, again, hopefully sooner rather than later with all that traffic there. So that's our view of the proposal, to try to put some practical sense on why this is being done. And as I said, Mr. Goldstein may have further comments on the county's behalf, and I know the transportation guys are also here in case Mr. Cox or anyone else has any more detailed questions about the signal delay and the signal timing and the turning lanes.
Joel, then one thing I would add is that I think county staff does believe that the construction of Lake Blanche will provide some relief to that intersection as well because it will allow for an additional place to make left to get over to Trinity Boulevard or to Gun Highway.
Yeah, correct, we agree. It will provide an alternate track that hopefully will also help relieve some of this interim condition, but I think the flip side of that is maybe even more significant. If we don't get Lake Blanche Drive done and that school opens, Starkey Boulevard will be even more of a mess than even as bad as it is now. So that's an impending, a serious issue if we don't get Lake Blanche Drive done, and right now there's no other way to get that done. That's the problem.
And the only other comment I would make is that the county's under construction for Ridge Road to connect to the Sun Coast, and I'm sure Steve or Essen can comment further, but it's likely to provide a significant relief to that intersection as well once it's open.
So we're happy to answer any questions, and for technical nature, Mr. Henry can answer, or my client, Mr. Call, be happy to answer anything he can provide. Otherwise, go ahead.
Mr. Cox?
All right, a couple things. As was already noted, the attachments on the agenda did not include the red line, so this is the first time I'm actually able to really compare between the two. And it seems like there's, you guys have a lot of problems with Sire, so it really should be a priority to try to get it fixed.
Actually, there, we have been working on a new system, and it's already been approved by the Board of County Commissioners, so that's something we're working on. So right now I think we're paying Sire month to month at this point in time.
Okay. So Starkey and 54, I drive that multiple times a day, and it needs improvement right now. I understand that once Ridge Road opens up, I'm quite sure that that's gonna provide some relief to Starkey Boulevard, but that's quite a ways away. And the question I have is, so, and having just got this development agreement, I can read it and compare the two, the changes, the Lake Blanche or Town Avenue, who is originally responsible for building that? And when?
So my understanding is really, it was not a specific requirement of Starkey Ranch MPUD to build it. Likely would have needed to be built by the developer of the pod who had bought it whenever they came in for development.
Okay. Because when I look at this, it's on, the road's on the map.
It is, it is a planned road, there's no question, but it was a, considered a site-related road, and site-related roads in the county are generally built when the adjacent development comes in for development.
Okay, so it's not the responsibility of the applicant today?
Currently, they have no responsibility to finish that. They built it up to, I think it's, somebody's helping with the name, begins with an M.
Marica or something?
Because that's the part they needed for their own development. So they have built sections of that roadway.
Just not the extension from there over to Starkey?
Correct.
Okay.
Because that would ultimately be the responsibility of whoever developed the land to the south of that road. But we have no plans in for, it's a different owner, it's not the same owner as the applicant.
Okay. I just, I'm gonna support this, okay, but I just have a concern that we are letting one developer off the hook in hopes that another developer is gonna come forward with their project. In all likelihood, they will. There's a lot of need for that development on Starkey Boulevard, but you're leaving some what-ifs there. And I would prefer to see there be some handoff of that responsibility from one developer to another and not put the county in the middle. And what we're doing here is we're putting the county in the middle by saying that, okay, you built this road for us, which we need, and I completely agree with that, so you don't have to fix this intersection that you are directly impacting, because they're direct, that Starkey Ranch is directly impacting Starkey Boulevard and 54. So we let them off the hook with the hopes of another developer coming in to step up that responsibility. But if they don't, it's okay, because the county's here and we're gonna get mobility fees and we'll be able to pay for it that way, but I'd rather see the developer build it because they can do it faster. And you probably do it more cost-effective and efficient than the county having to go through all of its processes to build a road or improve that intersection at some point down the road. So just for what it's worth, I just think that there should, this agreement should have been negotiated a little bit differently.
But just want to be clear, the Longleaf developers, it's not a hypothetical, they are currently obligated to fix that intersection. It's not, it's in writing, I mean, their conditions of approval require them to fix that intersection.
But you told me that they, that the county has not made them do that, even though they've had this in place and we're relying upon this new section that's coming in, number four it is?
Neighborhood four, correct.
Neighborhood four to come in, even though five's already being built. So we're attaching it to number four?
Correct. And number four will generate enough mobility fees to pay for that intersection. I can't speak to why we allowed Longleaf Neighborhoods 1, 2, 3, and 5 to build without fixing that intersection, maybe Mr. Khalil can answer that question, but he's shaking his head now. But it's been an obligation for Longleaf since probably it was originally approved.
Well, at least I now know who to thank every morning as I sit through multiple traffic lights waiting to go to work. So thank you for dropping the ball there, county staff.
Want to say anything else there?
Good afternoon, Essen Khalil with Planning and Development, current planning as a transportation planner. To be honest, I don't know why it was not triggered at Phase 1 or 2 or 3. The requirement was there from the beginning, and historically, this was considered a access management-related improvement with no mobility fee credits. And with the latest development that came in, we agreed that if they were to come in today, considering our current regulations, this would be considered an off-site improvement. Phase 4 is way north of that. Access management would have looked at it as their specific access, not half a mile away or a mile away from them. So the improvement, we all agree that it would be a mobility fee credit improvement. Nobody's ever gotten off the hook from doing this thing. It came down to a timing of doing this improvement. Perhaps the traffic studies were not done to support when it is needed. Now, the recent counts that were done, they do show that the left turn, dual left turn lanes are needed now. But like David was explaining, there's several kind of moving pieces there. One Ridge Road, two Rangeland, and the traffic building up on that, three Lake Blanche, and fourth piece, in my opinion, is the southern leg of the intersection. They haven't come in yet, but to get their geometry right so that they are accommodated, and they're accommodated the right way, it was general consensus that timing-wise, it would be better to see what type of traffic diversion happens in the next year or so when Lake Blanche is built. Because I think David and I, we talked about this, as you're approaching southbound on Starkey approaching 54, in the afternoon when, or in the morning, actually, the morning is the worst, by the time you get to the intersection, it's too late for you to pick another route. Rangeland is too far north. Unless you're somebody like me who opens up the Google Maps and you look at where it is red and you figure out a different route ahead of time. Lake Blanche, but our expectation is that as you're approaching the intersection in the morning, you see there's a backup, you turn on Lake Blanche instead and run parallel to 54 and pop out somewhere else on 54.
And that's gonna take you past the school zone, so that's always a pleasure.
It is, but it is a route that you'd rather take than to sit there through three or four cycle lengths, and it's a driver's perception, not just sitting and waiting at an intersection. And I do it too, it's silly, I'll take Leonard Road instead of avoiding 41, 54, and loop around, come back on 41 and do all of that. Time-wise, I may not be saving it, it's a perception of a driver that I'm moving, I'm doing something, I'm not sitting here through cycle after cycle. Longleaf is still on the hook for doing this thing, Phase 4, so we decided it would be prudent right now to have Lake Blanche come in and do it. They're gonna continue to monitor that intersection and study the warrants to see if Lake Blanche and Starkey triggers a signal warrant. And if it warrants a signal, a signal will be put in, there'll be a mobility fee credit of improvement. Okay? So we thought from a transportation perspective, it is a better decision to delay that dual left turn and really evaluate what happens with the diversion, because as of two days ago, I was informed that Ridge Road construction has been escalated. So the next year and a half, they're talking about connections to 41, which was four to five years out before.
Do you know what the timing is to connect it to the Sun Coast, Essen?
I do not, I do not. I was under the impression it was much longer, but we were dealing with a project on 41 and future Ridge Road, where we were just informed by project management that they have escalated their schedule and they're gonna do it within the next year and a half, which we were telling the developers it's four to five years out, so this has been sped up quite a bit. So Lake Blanche, Ridge Road, all of these are coming in almost around the same time, and with Rangeland, traffic is picking up, because I've been taking it every day, you probably use it, and I've noticed more and more. More and more, more and more traffic is using.
Yeah, I mean, Lake Blanche is not gonna help me at all, because where I go every morning is before where that's gonna come out to 54.
Well, eventually Rangeland will help, because your predominant movement is in the morning at that intersection, where everybody is coming south and majority heads east towards either Gun Highway or 50, I'm sorry, Sun Coast.
I go that way every day, and there's, yes, there's some, some traffic that's going that way. You know, I asked a stupid question yesterday, and that is, you know, do we have a traffic study that shows of this? And, you know, the answer was, no, we don't.
I'm sorry, traffic study?
We don't have a traffic study that shows what Rangeland Boulevard has what Rangeland Boulevard has either added or taken away from Starkey Boulevard. I also see a lot of people turning on the Starkey Boulevard from Starkey Ranch. So, you know, you have people coming from the Land O' Lakes area, and they're gonna turn and go through Starkey Ranch to get to Starkey Boulevard to go north. I mean, I see that, you know, that's happening, but we don't have a study that shows any of that.
We do have counts as of last year when Rangeland was opened up. That exact question had come up, like, "How much of a diversion are you really experiencing?" Road had just opened up. We put up some signs out there to 54, so on and so forth. The counts showed that, at that time, there wasn't a significant impact of Rangeland.
When you first opened it, that's...you're probably correct. But then the people who live in Starkey Ranch started to complain. So, of course, we put the sheriff's office out there, slurred by down, so...
But you have to realize also...
That had a chilling effect.
Most of your southbound traffic on Starkey is really not coming...majority, I'm talking about, is not really, in my opinion, is coming from Longleaf or per se Starkey. A lot of traffic comes from the north, that's coming down Decubus, Moon Lake, and whatnot, and heading this way. Now, with the Ridge Road and Rangeland being there, and then Lake Blanche, it would be interesting to see how the realistic, you know, impact of these three east-west, 54, Lake Blanche, Rangeland, and Ridge Road, actually, four of them, how they impact this intersection. It may be that we do counts, and as of today, it's needed, but in a year or so, year and a half, two years, we do counts again. And it shows that a dual left is needed, then definitely it will be put in.
I mean, it's been needed for three years. It's not just today. It's been needed for multiple years. So, one question I would have, that I would ask the staff to maybe look at for that intersection, is right now, there's...if you're heading north, coming to 54, you can either turn left or you can turn right. So if you need to turn left, you're in a long line of traffic. And what happens is a lot of people will turn right there and go up and make a U-turn on 54 so they can then head east instead of stacking in that lane. Or they'll just wait for the light to turn and they make two turn lanes to the east. I think maybe the county ought to look at that right-hand lane and make it, or consider making it, a right or left turn lane. That would certainly help with the stacking of traffic, because it stacks up all the way past... Was it Town Avenue, I guess it is?
That's not a very expensive solution. It can be done. Traffic operations already, I mean, they have to be on board with restriping and engineering services, so it could become a right or a left.
I mean, that might be a temporary fix while all these other things are happening. And I agree with you. I think that Ridge Road is gonna dramatically reduce the traffic that's on Starkey.
Right, and just, you know, to give you a little bit more background, you know, Steve Henry is here. They had presented two alternatives at that intersection for putting those dual left, you know, southbound dual lefts or through right. One was to take out the landscaping in the median, keeping their monument sign that's there. And the other one was to widen to the west. The westerly widening was significantly more expensive, because of the underground utility sidewalk relocation, so-called, light poles, all of that stuff. If you notice, the center median, even though it's nicely landscaped, the monument sign is offset. It was always offset. To accommodate this future turn lane, that will happen at some time in the future, right, which is now. So it is kind of set up to do that. Yes, you will hurt the beautiful entrance to Starkey, and there was quite a bit of opposition from their CDD board and whatnot, that you're destroying this thing and you haven't really evaluated the other road's impacts before you ruin our entryway. At least give it a chance. And we thought that would also buy us some time to see if any development comes on the south side to, you know, have a better, you know, idea of what the geometry should be like at that location.
The other thing I would say, you mentioned Lake Blanche potentially being used in conflict with the school traffic, but I believe the AM Peak is usually before the school's start time.
I am a...
Seven?
I'm a M-P.
When I'm gonna back up that left turn, it should be well before the start of school.
I'm not sure exactly what the school timings will be, Steve. AM Peak generally is between...
When the school's supposed to open?
Well, I was gonna say, as far as coming across Starkey Boulevard, Longleaf Elementary is there, so there's not gonna be people coming across there unless they're students from sixth, seventh, and eighth grade coming to the K-8. And then with Starkey development itself, those kids are all within the two-mile walk zone. I'm not saying they're gonna walk, but, you know...
No, the question is, his concern was that if people are using Lake Blanche to avoid the 54-Starkey intersection, that they're gonna be going right by the school.
Right.
The question is, would that...when is that the new school's start time will be?
Yeah, we don't know that yet. It all depends on the bus routes. We have to redo the whole bus routes, but...
Well, anyways, move along. I'll move for approval. I feel much better now that I've voiced my objection.
That's something to consider, really, you know, when you're...
Yeah, you need to have a little...
Is there any other public comment on that? Thank you, Essam. There's not any?
So I'll move for approval.
And second?
Motion and second. Any other comment from up here? Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
No, thank you.
Item PC four?
Good afternoon. Christina Acosta, Planning and Development. Item PC four is a request in the name of Ichbal Groves, Inc. to rezone approximately 38.75 acres from AC Agricultural District to RMH Mobile Home District. The property is located on the south side of Clinton Avenue, about a quarter mile east of US Highway 301. The surrounding zoning is a mix of agricultural, residential, and entitled commercial uses. Just to look at some of the surrounding zoning. From the west and the north, the site is bordered by the city of Dade City. Just to give you an idea of what some of that zoning is, immediately to the west is entitled commercial, and to the north is their medium-density residential zone. The only comments we received from Dade City were that the applicant would be required to enter into a utility service agreement for water and sewer. Future land use is RES six, but as Denise stated earlier, the applicant has voluntarily offered a deed restriction limiting the site to 121 units to address any possible issues related to density. That puts the site just over three units per acre. Access to the site is from Clinton Avenue. In addition, Pasco County has identified a future vision road that extends from US 98 North to the approximate midpoint between US 301 and Old Lakeland Highway on Clinton Avenue. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval. And I'm here for any questions.
Any questions from anybody here in the... The applicant present?
Thank you. Shelley Johnson, 6400 Madison Street, Newport Ritchie, Florida, and I have been sworn. I'm here to answer any questions. I'm not really sure what the concern is, but I'll listen to it and try to answer it the best I can. I know there's somebody here that wants to speak.
Comments from the public?
Thank you, gentlemen. My name is Luther Goodwin. My address is 11451 Sally Road, Dade City, Florida. And I'm here today out of concern about the future development of this proposed property. My wife and I have had the opportunity to be neighbors on the south end of this property for over 50 years, knowing both previous owners of that property. We've enjoyed the peace and quiet that the buffer has afforded us for those many years. My number-one concern, an immediate concern today, is what changes are being considered for the use of the land by the potential buyers, if approved by the various boards. Number-two concern is, and I think she may have just...Mrs. Johnson may have just answered it, was if someone could give me the egress and ingress point to this property. And of course, our main concern is the continued privacy for the future of our own neighborhood that adjoins those properties for the years to come. I'd like this to be a part of today's records, an official record. I'd like to get some type of response from concern number one and concern number two, perhaps from Mrs. Johnson, if I could.
Thank you.
So we're doing single-family detached. I think there was maybe a concern we were gonna do mobile home. That's what they're planning on doing. Again, it's a Euclidean, so it's not an MPD. We don't have plans or anything like that set. But the intent is to do the single-family detached, which is why they did the deed restriction to the 121. Detached. Oh, I'm sorry. I have a really bad toothache today. And that's all I'm really thinking about right now, but, no, so that's what they're doing. They're doing the single-family detached, 121. They're agreeing to the deed restriction. Obviously, they have a RES six, so they can actually do a lot more, six units to the acre. The other question was access management. When they go in for engineering, planning, site plan, construction plan, all that good stuff, as you all know, is when a lot of that stuff was dealt with, access management and stuff, especially at a stage like this where it's a Euclidean zoning, so versus an MPD. So, that answers those questions, but that will all be addressed, and you'll be publicly noticed on a lot of that stuff, and when they come in for engineering.
So, Shelley?
Sure.
If you're representing to this gentleman and the county commission that it's gonna be single-family detached, your deed restriction doesn't really say that. It just says a maximum of 121 residential units. So, if you're committing it's gonna be single-family detached, do we need to modify that deed restriction?
Yeah, I don't mind adding and identifying it as single-family units at all. I don't mind that at all, because the reason it got put...that was because of the transportation, and we had to get to 121 to get under anything where we were triggering thresholds and stuff, so... So I'm fine with that. If they wanna add that language, I don't have an issue with that at all.
Okay, and then I guess my other question is for that. Since he brought it back, says the study that's being done to realign 98, does it impact this property at all? Because I know there's been some conversations about realigning 98 so it lines up with Clinton. Maybe Essam knows. Can you put the aerial backup? So, the issue is that right now, Clinton... You have a jog between Clinton and 98 when you're trying to go east-west, and then eventually... So, there was money allocated from the state to redesign that intersection so that 98 would connect directly into Clinton. And my question is, is there any discussion going through this part? I know you mentioned the vision road. Does it go through that property or not?
Yes. Okay, so, right where the arrow's pointing here, this extra section here, this is also... This is also owned by the applicant. The vision road is gonna intersect just about right here.
Where it goes from...what is that vision road?
I'm sorry, what is the vision road?
Where does the vision road go?
I'm gonna try to bring it up. It'll extend from US 98 North to that midpoint on...between 301 and Lakeland Highway on Clinton.
So it doesn't...I remember I took a picture of what you're talking about, so it...
I'm hoping that Denise will be able to pull up a picture, but yeah.
I'm gonna do it and try it.
Should come...
So is that the road that's going to connect to 98? Is that the... But is that the realignment in 98 that they're talking about, or it's just a different vision road? Okay. We don't...I don't think you have the people here that can answer this question. I'm just saying, before this gets to the board, you all need to make sure that this property is not impacted by that realignment, that 98 realignment. Because I'm understanding the state allocated like a billion dollars to realign that, study the realignment of that intersection. And I don't know where that stands, but the applicant deserves to know whether that potential is going through this property. Pardon me? I don't know if the LRTP would have that level of detail. I mean, that's why they're doing a PD and a route to determine the route of that realignment. And maybe this property is not affected at all, but... But, Essam, you don't need to answer this now. I'm just asking that before it gets to the board, somebody needs to coordinate with project management.
This is Essam again. I have not looked at that option. That whether the realignment is actually, the 98 realignment and the money being allocated.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just saying that somebody has. So, I believe project management has...I think DOT is actually doing it for the county. So, somebody needs to look at where this gets to the board.
Sure.
Any other comment?
I had a question. Just want to double-check, these are single-family detached mobile homes?
Well, that's why I asked for clarification, because the zoning's to RMH, which allows for mobile homes. But Shelley said that she's willing to commit that it's going to be single-family detached, not mobile home.
Not mobile homes.
Which, if that's the commitment, then she needs to amend the deed restriction, because that's not what it says.
And can you do single-family detached non-mobile homes in the RM one MH?
I believe so, but I'll let staff answer that question.
Okay.
RMH, you can do single-family detached homes, and that change was made by the Board of County Commissioners in an amendment in either 2018 or 2019. And here's the vision road in the red, so...and we'll get that information. We'll check with Margaret or...
Yeah, I'm not really as concerned about the vision road, because of that appeared to be east of their property. I'm more concerned about...
The allocation.
The realignment of 98 in Clinton.
And our parcels here? I can't. Our parcels next to the first blue area that you see there on the map on close to 301, adjacent to the east.
It may be that it won't affect it. I don't...it looks like it could, though.
We'll have that information.
Any other comment? So, I guess we make a motion with the recommendation or the change to the deed restrictions, or...
Maybe you can make a motion for approval with the understanding that the applicant's gonna amend your deed restriction to clarify that it's single-family detached.
I'll move that.
Motion and second. Any other comment? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Second. Opposed? Second, opposed?